I call to order this Tuesday, September 17th, 2019, meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome this evening. Now, I just have a quick announcement about open podium invitation. It's an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie City Government before each council meeting, typically the first and third Tuesday of each month from 6:30 to 6:55 here in the council chamber. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office at 952-949-8412. By noon of the meeting date with your name, phone number, and subject matter, just so we can be prepared for you. If time permits, after scheduled speakers are finished, the mayor will open the floor to unscheduled speakers. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have questions about open podium, please contact the city manager's office. Tonight, we're really pleased to once again welcome Commissioner Jan Callison to the podium and to present to us, I believe, is this your eighth presentation?
It's been 11 years.
Eleven years, your 11th presentation. We just want to thank you also, since you've announced that you're not running again. Thank you for your service to Eden Prairie and to the, really, all of Hennepin County. You've had some pretty major votes in here the last 11 years, and we appreciate your service and your thoughts, thoughtfulness, and really insight and perspective. So, look forward to this presentation. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Case, and thanks for those comments. It's been my privilege to represent Eden Prairie at the Hennepin County Board and to enjoy your support, so thank you as well. And so, good evening also, council members and staff. You are so fortunate as to have two Hennepin County Commissioners. I know Commissioner Gotal was here not too long ago, so I will try not to repeat what she said, but I'm happy to take your questions and your comments as well. So, first, a few updates. Eden Prairie Library, we had hoped that it would be open by the end of 2019. The latest word I've received is that the staff expects to open at the first quarter of 2020. There was a wall that apparently took some extra work, so the project is a little delayed. And by next week, they expect to know more precisely when in the first quarter the library will open. So, we're getting close, and we appreciate people's patience as that work transpires. There's been a pipe that's been challenging in northern part of Eden Prairie, just south of the crosstown, and I know the county staff and Eden Prairie staff have been working diligently on that. I understand the pipe that's necessary may be on its way from South Dakota even as we speak. It will still be a couple of weeks before that work is done, so that's also ongoing. You may be interested also in the medical examiner's facility that's proposed, but just across the road in Minnetaka. That went to the Minnetaka City Council last night for their first review. It should be to them for their approval, hopefully, next month in October. And it has shifted from what we originally talked about. We're going to put it in the southeast portion of the site. We're talking about the southwest, and this is the county homeschool site, if people are not familiar with that. So, that should be underway fairly soon. And then finally, of course, Southwest LRT has been a major endeavor for all of us. And as you probably are aware, we received our second letter of no prejudice a couple of weeks ago, so progress is ongoing, and we continue to appreciate the patience of folks in Eden Prairie, too, as they deal with the construction and the challenges of getting around. I brought one handout for you because I thought you might be interested in a broader Hennepin County view. And this is, these are excerpts from our March 2018 County Assessors Report. The first sheet is just the cover sheet that gives some summary information. It reports, for example, that we've had six years of property growth in Hennepin County. That's probably the same for Eden Prairie. And during those six years, the median value of a residential, single-family residential property has increased by 50%. Probably not a surprise to those of you in Eden Prairie either. The next several pages are some maps that enable you to compare Eden Prairie to other communities. We have 45 communities in Hennepin County, so maps that show, for example, changes in property values across those 45 communities, whether it's commercial or apartment or residential, wherever the category might be. So, that gives you the opportunity to compare Eden Prairie to some of the other communities in Hennepin County or all the other communities. And the final sheet is information that's particular to Eden Prairie, giving you information about the types of property and the values in the city. Property taxes are relative, as you know, and so the changes that we see across Hennepin County affect what property taxes people pay for Hennepin County in Eden Prairie, and so I thought that would be of interest to you. And the final item I thought I would comment on is the county's budget. The county administrator presented his draft budget to us today. That begins what is a very long process of the county of really reviewing each of the lines of business. So, next Tuesday, we will set our maximum tax levy, and then we will begin to examine the health line of business and the human services line of business, and corrections, and libraries, and public works, and the whole gamut. And at the end of that point, in the middle of December, we will set the budget for the county. The county administrator is recommending a capital budget of about $2 billion. That's a $72 million increase from 2019, and his proposed property tax levy is an increase of 4.75%, so slightly under 5%. That tells me that it's about half of the increase in the operating budget is to be paid for by property tax. The rest apparently is coming from other sources of revenue, whether that's bonding or something else. I don't have a lot of detail about what's driving the change. Certainly, salary adjustments for county employees. We have 9,000 county employees, so a 2% or 2.5% salary increase adds up to, has a big impact. He's also proposing increasing some staffing, only about 36 staffing, and 15 of those, he is proposing to go to our service centers. The result of MidLars, the result of RealID, is that it takes longer to get a renewal at our service centers. That means people wait in line longer with the same number of people, so as I say, he's proposing 15 more people for our service centers. And that's really what I gleaned today from his presentation as we're talking about what the changes might be for the county budget next year. So, that concludes my presentation. As I say, I'm happy to get your comments. I should probably add, too, we had a lot of speakers today talking about housing and affordable housing. And one of the proposals, it's not in this because it comes through our Housing Authority, is another $4 million towards supportive housing. That actually would be a net zero property tax levy increase because the rail authority would be reduced by $4 million. So, it would not change people's property taxes in that category in Hennepin County, but it would permit us to provide housing for some of those folks that we serve and who are most at risk of not having housing because of perhaps chemical issues, mental health issues, whatever the gamut might be of folks that need county assistance. So, with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take your questions and your comments.
I appreciate that you mentioned affordable housing at the very conclusion. Now, we had a workshop this evening that we have a task force that's working for the next six to eight months, and they gave a preliminary, one-third of the way through, report back. And so, I think every city probably in your jurisdictions is looking at it, and we all should be. So, thank you for doing what you have done as well.
And hopefully, the state will join us in that review and provide more resources.
Council members, any questions of our commissioner?
I'd just like to thank you for all your work.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
My pleasure.
You've represented us well.
Yeah, I would, too, because we've worked on the Southwest Light Rail together for 10 years, I suppose.
Fifty years.
Decades.
LRT has been around.
But I've appreciated everything you've done and how you've looked out for Eden Prairie's interests on many things. So, it's been very nice to have you around, but you've made your decision, so I respect that, but you will be missed.
Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Have a good evening. We have a donation this evening. Let's see, Mr. Getchow, I think you'll probably turn it over to Mr. Lauthammer, but go ahead.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Lauthammer.
Your honor, council members, tonight we have a donation from Envy Skin Clinic for $500. It goes towards Arts in the Park, and just a reminder, Arts in the Park is this Saturday. Purgatory Creek Park, 9 to 4. It's rain or shine, so if we were to get inclement weather, we do have the community center as a backup, but right now, it's looking good for Saturday. So, if you get a chance, stop by Purgatory Creek Park for a really good Arts in the Park celebration.
And just to note that all these donations are so helpful to enhance what we might have been doing otherwise, but it really adds tremendous amount, and we really deeply appreciate it. So, is there a motion to accept?
I would move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation of $500 from Envy Skin Clinic to go towards the arts in the parks.
A second to that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The next is a donation from the Crime Prevention Fund. Let's see, is that our Chief Weber? All right.
Thank you, Mayor, and city council members. Tonight, this is the second time this year that the Crime Prevention Fund has made a rather generous donation towards our crime prevention program, our canine program. And again, tonight, we're asking that the city accept a $14,645 donation from the Crime Prevention Fund to cover the cost of acquiring a new dog and the training. I think it's important to dig just a little deeper and recognize that the Crime Prevention Fund raised that money, but there was a $6,000 donation from the Lions Club to the Crime Prevention Fund. Comcast donated 6,000, and again, we're still spending some of the donation that the family of the late Dr. Wright provided to the Crime Prevention Fund. And you may recall, he was very instrumental in the care of our dogs in the early years of the department. So, our second dog will be handled by Officer Brandon Carlston. Name is Jackson. Actually, I have Lisa Toomey, the president of the Crime Prevention Fund, here with me tonight. Thank you.
Doesn't Lisa want to get up and speak? We appreciate very much not only the Crime Prevention Fund, but all that you do, Lisa. You're an amazing volunteer in our community. Counsel, any comments or questions prior to the motion? I will entertain a motion then.
I adopt the resolution accepting the donation of $14,645 from the Eden Prairie Crime Prevention Fund for the purchase of a new police canine.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. Approval of the agenda. I have three quick items under council member reports. Does anybody else have any to add or want something changed on the agenda, or Mr. Getchow?
No.
Okay, counsel, anybody? Then with that addition, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. Minutes. Did anyone have any questions about either of either the workshop or the council meeting held September 3rd? If not, let's clump them into one motion. Is there a motion for approval?
Move to approve the following city council minutes. Council workshop held Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019, and city council meeting held Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, moving on to the consent calendar. Anybody have any questions or items they'd like to pull temporarily or vote on separately? If not, is there a motion for approval?
Move approval of items A through Q on the consent calendar.
A second to that.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, we have, I believe, just one public hearing. We have a couple. We have a lot. Sorry. I just didn't turn the page.
It's all right.
We have 17. No, there's only three, but I just didn't flip the page.
It's okay.
Are there four, really?
Yeah.
Seriously?
A through D.
There are, yeah.
I mean, generally, before.
One is tied to, the two are kind of tied together to one project, and one is a vacation of easements.
Give me a little bit of a way out here. Okay. Paravell Apartments, Mr. Getchow.
Yes, Mayor and council members, Timberland Partners is requesting approval to redevelop property at 635 Prairie Center Drive. You may know this as the second phase of the Castle Ridge redevelopment project. This phase proposes a construction of a five- and seven-story apartment building that provides 246 residential units, mix of studio, one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartments with underground parking, limited surface parking, several different indoor and outdoor amenities with a density of about 40, the proposed density is 49.3 units an acre. So, we have the proponent here to provide a presentation of their project, to go through their project, and then there is a public hearing, and then action needed on the PUD ordinance and the preliminary plat.
All right. Proponent, do we have a presentation?
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thanks for having us here tonight. Hopefully, we'll have a PowerPoint. There we go. Start tonight. With me tonight, I'm Ryan Seiler, Vice President of Development with Timberland Partners. Timberland Partners will be the developer, the owner, and the property management agent for Paravell, just like we were for Elevate. I'm just finishing up down the road. With me also tonight is Evan Jacobson, Principal with Tucci Montgomery Architects, and I'll turn over part of the presentation to him and a little bit later on to go through the physical aspects of the project. Some of you guys know us from being here previously, but a little bit about Timberland Partners. We're a privately owned, family-run company. We've been in existence since 1992. We own and manage over 70 apartment communities in 16 different states, which now totals over 16,000 units. We have over 425 employees. We are based in Bloomington, right down the road, so it's nice. Trust me, we're over here every day looking at the progress of our projects, and I think that's important. One of the great things about Timberland Partners is we have our own property management company, as I mentioned, but we only manage what we own, and we don't do any third-party management for any other people. So, we're very focused on what we do. No one cares about your property like you do yourself, and for us, that's our main focus and one of our competitive advantages, we believe. We've been pretty active. As you know, we've had $120 million, $120 million under construction last year, and part of that is Elevate, which is finished up. Had over 60 people move in on Labor Day weekend, so that's going well, and we've got another $130 million planned in development for next year, including Paravell if we would get approval tonight. That's just a little bit about Timberland. I wanted to talk a little bit about stakeholder engagement. We've been at this process with Paravell for quite a while. We first approached the city staff with the proposal, I think it was last August, so August of 2018. We're a part of the bigger master plan through Press Homes, the redevelopment of Broadmoor Apartments. So, our community, our neighborhood engagement was part of that process with them when they approached the neighborhood. Since then, we've also been engaged in a lot of the affordable housing, open houses, about what to do with the people, the residents, leaving Broadmoor Apartments, and we've been working with some of that to house some of them in Elevate and also be part of that process. We've had extensive communication with staff. We've also been in front of the Planning Commission twice, initially for a concept review, and then also in front of the council for a concept review, and then obviously, a month ago, for Planning Commission for approval. That was a very valuable process for us, and we got a number of, we got a lot of good feedback out of that, and I hope you'll see we've addressed some of the concerns that came out of those concept reviews over the last few months. Some planned community characteristics. The project, as stated, is 245 units plus one guest suite. The breakout is in the report, but it's a nice mix of studios, one bedrooms, one-plus dens, two bedrooms, two-plus dens, a lot of different unit sizes, a diverse housing mix, which we're happy to be able to provide. Part of this proposal, which you'll hear, we are asking for tax increment financing. We're including 63 affordable units in this development. Paired with the 45 we included with Elevate, that's over 100 units within a pretty close, just under a half mile of the light rail. So, I think that's a big step for the city and for us. 50 units will be affordable at 50% of area median income, and then another 13 units, 7% at 80%, and then six units at 100% in the project. We're providing 425 parking stalls. This is an increase from when we were last in front of you before. I think we were a little, just a little over one per unit. Now, we're at 1.73 stalls per unit, but more importantly, we're at one stall, over one stall per bedroom, which I think is a more accurate gauge to make sure that you're appropriately parked. And lastly, with our access or proximity to Purgatory Creek Park, we have 327 bicycle stalls that'll be provided as part of this project, which is great considering that the park hooks up to over 100 miles of bicycle trails. Little bit of project introduction. As we went through the process, talking with staff, going through concept review, there seemed to be, to us, six different items that kind of stood out that we needed to address and really make sure we hit on as part of this project. Heightened density was one of them, I think, as part of the comp plan, and as this being one of the last site zone for high density in Eden Prairie, it was important that we pushed it as much as we can and still have an economically viable project. So, I think what you'll see is that to still have green space, we actually reduced the footprint, but we're going seven stories at the highest point of the building. I'm not going to say we're the, I think we're the first in the Twin Cities that might build under the building, the new building code for seven stories of wood frame, but we'll at least be one of the first. So, we took that to heart. Parking, I put the statistics up there. We originally came with 324 stalls. We're now at 425 stalls. We're going to have a lot of green and sustainable features. I'll outline that on the next page. Strong public connections was a big part, I think, of the overall Press Homes master plan. We're trying to do that with the way we connect to the future retail, and then out to Flying Cloud Drive, and then also how we connect to the park, and we're doing that, Evan will address it, but through colored pavers, permeable pavers that outline crosswalks and other things, wayfinding materials. One community, that was an important thing about this when we looked at the project for us. This is true life cycle living. There's going to be something for empty nesters. There's going to be something for people right out of school, people that work in the area that need affordable housing, and then in between. And I think the nice play with the Press Homes is we expect we're going to have some kids who have parents that are living in the Press Homes deal, and then eventually, will also be a feeder for the Press Homes deal as they age in place as well. So, there should be some nice synergies. And then lastly, it's, the site is elevated, and I think for us, it was important to try to design a project that was going to be architecturally significant and really be something that probably hasn't been seen in Eden Prairie, that sticks out but fits in. So, it doesn't really make sense, but that's kind of how we approached the design. Just a few planned community characteristics. I'm not going to go through all of them, but pets are important. We'll have a really nice dog wash area. I talked about 327 bicycle stalls. Besides storage, we're also going to have a big bike fix-it area, something that people can congregate around, that it's more than just pulling it out of a bike locker. You can actually repair there. You can socialize. We're going to have two rooftop patios. I think we'd be foolish if we didn't try to take advantage of the views. So, there'll be a patio on the five-story portion of the building and also the seven-story portion of the building. And then some unit amenities, really big balconies, hard surface cabinets. And then we're going to try and do, you know, programmable thermostats and try to do things we can to help everything be more energy efficient, which leads into sustainable community characteristics. One of the great things about this site is working together with the other developers involved and also the watershed to do more of a district stormwater type approach to stormwater. As part of that, we're going to have a rainwater cistern to help with reuse of water and irrigation. We'll do, we'll structure our roof to be able to add solar panels in the future, and then also, we'll add green roof materials. So, those are just a few of the things we're doing. We'll also, as we did at Elevate, provide EV charging stations as well. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Evan Jacobson. I know a lot of this was covered at Planning Commission, but I think it's important to understand how significant this project is to the city. And I'd like him just to spend a little bit of time going through the physical aspects of the project.
Good evening, Mayor Case, council members, staff. My name is Evan Jacobson. I'm with Tucci Montgomery Architects. Obviously, I'm working with Ryan and Bjorn and his team at Timberland Partners to come up with a design that we can all be happy with. So, I'd love to walk you through it and be available for any questions you may have. Couple of things. We'll just kind of cover site layout features, layout of the building, programming, massing, and then talk about materiality a little bit. I think everybody's pretty familiar with the site. Obviously, we are Phase Two of the Castle Moore redevelopment project led by Presbyterian Homes. So, the red outline, as you see, is the extent of the full redevelopment project. The blue highlighted area in the kind of far right of the side is the subject property that we're talking about today. Blow-up PUD master plan. Again, I think everybody is probably pretty familiar with this slide. Again, in the northernmost portion of the image on the screen is the site that we're talking about today. You can see the dash property line around the site that includes about 4.96 acres of full site area that is technically being purchased by Timberland Partners. Of that, just a couple of important things to note on this slide. Obviously, we have the wetland kind of grayed out to the western half of that site, and then there's some dark gray paving that obviously connects our project with the roadways, but also the rest of the PUD development with the existing streets and infrastructure. So, all being said, you take out that roadway, you take out that wetland, we're dealing with about a 3.6 acre site, just to keep it in context. Another thing that you'll notice, as the site kind of dips down, southernmost portion of the site, where kind of the saturated color dips down, that's a very important corner to us. It's actually the only corner in the entire development where all three development parcels meet. So, I'll talk a little bit more about that when we zoom in a little bit, but it's an important corner to us, how residents and future residents arrive at the building, how we connect to the other development parcels, and then how we connect to the site as a whole. Opposite of that, on the kind of far left side of Columbine, you can very lightly see a blue dash, obviously. That's just indicating the extensive trail system around Purgatory Creek. So, we imagine a lot of our residents taking advantage of that outdoor recreation amenity. That's obviously so wonderful to have in such close proximity. Zooming in a little bit, just to talk about site circulation and how pedestrians and vehicles will access and move around the site. Two blue arrows on the bottom right of the screen, those are our primary pedestrian entrances. The one furthest to the bottom right, main entrance, that's our front door. That's where we envision drop-offs, Ubers, pickups, meeting a resident, meeting a guest, maybe a short-term mail drop, all of those kind of functions. You may recall, last time you saw the plan, we actually had four or five visitor parking spots there. Based on our dialogue with staff and some other stakeholders in the project, you can see that those are no longer there, and they actually kind of wrap around that corner. So, again, the very bottom portion of the site, where you see the kind of blue hatch over the parking, that's not actually blue pavement, but that would be a decorative concrete or permeable paver treatment, and those spots there would basically be our future resident parking. So, the ones that we had at the immediately adjacent to the front door, we kind of wrapped around the corner. And with that, you'll kind of see on the next slide, that's the kind of landscape plan. We're really placing a strong emphasis on how we wrap pedestrians and lead them from those visitor parking spaces into the front door of the building, and then how that acts as an access point to reach the rest of the site. Moving kind of to the west or to the left of the screen, another change from the last time we were here is you'll notice that the parking spots along that road are now head-in parking, which matched the parking spots on the Castle Moore portion or on the Presbyterian Home portions directly south. That's kind of grayed out. Those were parallel before, and as Ryan noted, we actually pushed that whole portion of the building up to get more parking. Based on some of that feedback, reduced our overall building footprint and rental square footage a little bit, but felt it was in the best interest of making a cohesive site, similar roadscape, streetscape, all throughout the property. And then obviously, addressing some of our parking needs that we were looking for solutions. Left side of the screen, the two red arrows, those are our two vehicular entrances to the garage. The garages are actually disconnected, so the one on the bottom half of the page, that goes down to the lower level garage. The one on the top of the page goes to the upper level garage. It actually decreases traffic demand at each of those points by having two separate garages and actually increases our efficiency, again, trying to maximize the number of internal parking spots to address the city guidelines or get as close as we could. Backside, the blue arrow that we didn't talk- Backside, the blue arrow that we didn't talk about, that's kind of, you know, you've been here a time or two, you can park in that visitor parking circle in the back of the courtyard and kind of walk through a very elaborate courtyard, terrace courtyard that brings you in kind of to the back entrance of the building, so you could go and visit a friend or a neighbor or a relative who lives in the facility. Our landscape plan and amenities, this is basically the same slide we just looked at with kind of the technical aspects of the landscaping and the trees and the shrubs and kind of the amenities in that courtyard turned on. So Ryan did a good job of noting that, you know, this building is very amenity-rich. There's a long list of things inside this building, but there's also a long list of things outside this building that will appeal to residents and guests alike and anybody who's just passing by. Kind of starting at the primary drop-off entrance, you can kind of see how elaborate that, the kind of loopway from our future resident into that, our primary front door entrance is with the decorative stamped concrete, there's some bike racks, benches, potentially a water feature there and very generously landscaped at that corner, really to make that front entrance of our building wrap all the way from the actual door all the way to those visitor parking spots. Moving to the left, the bottom left corner, you can kind of see the zigzag lines, those represent the T-lights that are overhead of that bike lounge that Ryan mentioned. It's kind of a cool feature we think of the building, it's a terrace patio with an outdoor fire pit directly adjacent to our bike storage and repair room. We envision that as, you know, a resident grabbing a bike, taking a loop around the lake, coming back, you know, there's a bike wash station in there so they can hose off their bike and then sit by the fireplace and have a beverage of choice or just watch the sunset over Purgatory Creek. Moving north of that a little bit, you can see some L-shaped and some circle-shaped spaces on the, kind of immediately north of the white bar. That's just a grill station, we actually have several grill stations in the courtyard. Basically in, you know, we're trying to create nodes of space so that the spaces are, you know, small enough for a group of two to gather and feel comfortable, but also for a group of fifteen. So that's actually one of three grill stations in the courtyard. The other two are kind of over by the pool and off of the main entrance, which is that pass-through that Ryan talked about. Obviously, you can see the blue kind of trapezoid shape, that's the pool. You can see that this plan is oriented north-south, so we basically get that nice, direct west exposure to the pool deck and that interior courtyard. I think the last time you were here, the bottom half of the building actually had a dog leg that went up and we took that out, again, kind of reducing that overall building footprint and square footage in efforts to allow more solar access to that courtyard and the amenity space, just to make that a very comfortable and inviting space for the residents and users of the facility. Again, this is just pretty quick rendering of kind of how that courtyard might look. You can kind of see that grill station elevated above an indoor dog run. So there's an indoor dog run directly adjacent to an outdoor dog run, puppy playdates, training of your dog or your pet in inclement weather that leads directly to a fenced-in dog run so you could let your dog out without actually going outside in the middle of the winter. On top of that is the grill station and the patio and then as you kind of terrace up another level, that's where you kind of get to the ring road of, you know, private walkout patios that are adjacent to all of that courtyard. Switching gears a little bit just to massing, as Ryan described the building, two hundred and forty-six units, about four hundred and twenty-five total square feet, four hundred and twenty-five thousand total square feet, divided primarily into a seven-story mass and a five-story mass. Seven-story mass is very intentionally located along Prairie Center Drive furthest from the creek, which actually allows more units to have a view overlooking the five-story building and also, again, addresses kind of solar access, the lower portion of the building facing the south and the west to allow more sun into that courtyard. Regarding the unit size, Ryan did a good job. You know, I think from my perspective, we do a lot of multifamily buildings and what's unique about this project is there really is a very large spectrum of units and unit sizes from traditional, you know, six hundred and fifty square foot one bedrooms all the way up to eight hundred square foot one bedrooms. So very large, hopefully we're appealing to a very broad demographic. I think that's obviously a very important piece to Timberland Partners and what they're trying to do here in this project and Eden Prairie as a whole. The slide that's on the screen now, kind of the teal areas, if you can imagine, kind of zooming right through the building, kind of shows the footprint of the spaces. The image on the left kind of shows the extents of the first and the second floor common spaces. That includes our fitness, our coworking, leasing reception, mail, fireside room, private lounge, theater, golf simulator, kind of those real public, high-energy amenities. And then the image on the right is kind of showing kind of those other nodes of space. You can see the roof deck on the seventh story of the taller mass and then on the five-story, kind of on the back, the highest portion of the image, showing that five-story roof deck. So just from an overall perspective, a lot of common space in this project. We have something like sixty to sixty-five square feet per unit indoor common space, which is nearly double a lot of the projects we do locally. Talking about materiality just a little bit, you know, one of the things that Ryan said is, you know, fit in but be different. You know, we have looked at this building a lot, the building has a very irregular shape, there's not a lot of bright angles, we're dealing with kind of an abnormal site. And so one of the things that we've done to overcome that architectural challenge is kind of come up with a scheme where we're bookending the corners because there are a lot of outside corners with a similar material palette and aesthetic treatment. So as you can see on the very prominent corner, this is kind of driving north on Prairie Center Drive, looking at the corner, all that white material is a natural or a cast stone product, a very high-quality material that really is kind of the face of the building as you kind of look at this thing from its primary entrance. But also, if I flip back to the massing, you can kind of see that same aesthetic popping up on all the other corners of the building. So as you experience this thing and walk around it, walking around Purgatory Creek, view it from Prairie Center Drive, you kind of get that same image and it starts to tell its own story and become very unique and create its own identity within the other context of the buildings. So the third image on the bottom from the left, it's a pretty standard tan masonry, you can see that kind of trumping around the rest of the building, creating that rhythm to, you know, allow those white volumes to have their strong corners within the tan masonry becoming kind of the rhythmic element in the center of the building. The next image on the right is kind of a dark metal panel, you can see that above the white, it's basically used above those, that high-quality white, natural or cast stone material. And then the two images on the bottom right are vertical and a horizontal fiber cement that would be kind of used at the inset areas and up high in the building, you can just kind of barely see it on the seven-story portion between the two, the roof elements, that horizontal siding. Another thing that was high on the list of discussion points when we met with the various stakeholders on the project was making this building be consistent with other recently approved projects in Eden Prairie and the Eden Prairie Design Guidelines, but also creating something unique and special for this site. So the image on the left, or yeah, the image on the left is obviously elevated Southwest Station, the other Timberland project that is currently just open. And the image on the bottom of the screen is the Presbyterian Homes project that got approved several weeks, two months ago. The top two images on the right are obviously the project we're talking about now. And I think that this image is kind of collage, you know, you squint your eyes from afar distance and you start to see some similarities and some characteristics and, you know, the roof lines being consistent and creating that vernacular that those Design Guidelines are there to help create. And ending just again, these are kind of all the images that we've looked at already of the project, but we're very excited about the project. As is Timberland, we're excited to be in Eden Prairie and add to the city and the character and I'm happy to stick around for any questions. With that, I'll hand it back over to Ryan, he'll go through, I think, just a couple scheduled things. And we'll go from there, happy to come back up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Evan. Just in closing, talking about schedule a little bit, assuming approval tonight, we would then go for, well, either way, we have watershed approval October 2nd, which I'm sure will be a condition of any type of approval. And then November, we plan on submitting for building permit with construction, construction starting sometime in the first quarter of 2020 and then about an eighteen-month construction schedule, which would have us wrapping up in the fall of 2021. And so with that, I'm sorry for the long presentation, but we wanted to give you all the detail we could and happy to take any questions you might have. Thank you.
Counsel, what's your pleasure? Do you want to have a couple of questions now of the proponent before we open up public hearing?
I've got one, I've got one that I'd do afterwards.
Okay.
I think it said somewhere on the...
Nope, you're good. I thought you just said do it after, but absolutely.
No, I've got one for you.
Perfect.
That the affordable, it'll be all in the studio and the one bedroom and two bedrooms sort of proportionally.
Yeah, I mean, so the unit mix of the building where the affordable units were proportionally be close to what the proportion of that unit mix is, if that makes sense.
That's great. Sometimes in the past, people have wanted mostly studios or maybe one bedrooms, but going into the two bedrooms makes it usable for a lot of different types of folks. So I appreciate that a lot.
Thank you.
Just, just one question, I'm not sure, I read anywhere here, what is the approximate rental cost from one bedroom estimated in the future?
For the one bedroom, I can pull that statistic in a minute, I have them, but in general, the units in general rent for around two-twenty a square foot, if that makes sense. So depending on the size of the, we're such a raging units, yeah. So from the affordable units, you're looking at anywhere from eight hundred dollars all the way up to over two thousand for some of the really large units. So a pretty diverse range.
I just had a question on solar and it's not anything that I think we as a city are even close to, or knowing enough about technologically to begin to expect or demand. But so my question to you and maybe even to staff would be, how close are we in the market to having solar be viable so that, are we, you know, two years away, five years? I'm just a guess, but so that a project comes in, they're all solar, you know, you've got an amazing rooftop up there and you said that it's solar-ready, which I'm happy about, thank you so much, but just curious, was that looked at? Is it just not viable yet?
It's looked at, it's still, I mean, depending on what you're doing, it's still anywhere from a five to ten-year payback for operating costs, so it's still a big upfront capital cost. We did this in a project we just finished in Minneapolis too and we're doing it here where we're fitting the building infrastructure-wise to put the panels on, but solar's moving so fast and this is a positive thing, that even though we're doing that, I think it's going to make more sense in the future to actually buy solar off the grid from Excel, which is already starting to happen. So I don't have a timeframe, I will tell you that like anything with technology, it is getting more efficient, so.
I appreciate that you looked and thanks for your answer.
Just a couple of quick questions.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
So, you know, this is a project where you're building it out of, you know, stick construction, wood construction and it's, you know, seven stories and kind of new, you know, new coating that allows you to do that. Any challenges that you see in putting together the building, you know, with the wood frame construction and in terms of fire safety, et cetera?
Yeah, you know, I don't, I mean, really, we're building one more story of stick than what you can do now under the current code. Usually, it takes so long for these codes to get actually adopted from the time they were conceived that usually fire code issues are worked out well in advance. I know it's something that the building official here is, you know, asked as well when we initially met with them, so I have no doubt that it's going to be a critical factor as we go through the review process.
Great, thank you.
Just a second or no?
That was, yeah.
Okay. We'll have a public hearing and then if we need to call you back up, we will, thank you so much.
Great, thanks.
So this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the counsel on this particular item tonight, Paraval?
Seeing none, I would move to close the public hearing and adopt a resolution for planned unit development, concept review on four point nine six two acres and approve the first reading of ordinance for planned unit development, district review with waivers on four point nine six two acres and adopt a resolution for preliminary plat of one outlot into one lot on four point nine six two acres and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions.
Second that.
Let you two fight it out and make a guess who got that. It's been, first and motion's been made and seconded. So counsel, any questions, any comments, any additional, Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, I did have a couple of comments here. I do like your community gardens, that you've planned where, you know, allows people still to do some gardening if they want to. I like the fact that your building's very dog-friendly and that they have the bike area, so it's encouraging people to go out and, you know, use the parks and the activity of things which is good for all ages. In fact, bikes might be good for walking dogs for that matter. But it seems quite imaginative with a lot of different things. Also, you had something where a business center and a package center where people wouldn't have, you know, could have their stuff delivered to, which sounded like a good idea. And I thank you for all the thought that went into this building and a little bit of imagination.
Counselmember Freiber.
I just have a few comments to make about it. First one's pretty straightforward, outstanding. I'm familiar with that lot and the challenges I think that proposes and I'm amazed what you put together. I'm looking at this list of amenities that you have, it's quite impressive when you can still put together the affordable housing ratios that you did do also. I'm really looking forward to it and I think it's going to be a great addition to that part, you know, that lot in our community as a whole. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
I would just concur, I think it's a great project, the architectural differences, but similarities to the other new projects, I think it fits in well into the community. I think it, you know, it's going to be a big building, but it, I think, you know, given the way you've put it together with the colors, the materials and the, you know, the variance in heights, I think it's going to, I think it's going to really fit in and look great. So, thank you.
Counselmember Ryan.
Thank you. When I read this, I thought, wow. Couple of other words came through is, it's beautiful. I think it's just every aspect, I think it's a great design. You know, we were talking earlier and I said, we said, it feels good and it's a really great thing. So it's a model development for Eden Prairie. I think the affordable component, you know, you're able to bring sixty-three units is The all the other amenities there, great. And I think this bring young people to Eden Prairie that who want to live here, work here, raise their children and enjoy all the other things happening. So just want to say thank you, awesome job.
Yeah, I can't really say anything new to what everyone has said. I do want to say though, it feels very much like you've raised the bar. I really feel like as future projects, not just that come into Eden Prairie, but that come into our region, the mix of amenities, all these adjectives and adverbs that have been set up here, it's truly amazing. And there are some things that do stick out, the affordable components, just wonderful. But what I liked and it's really, trying to think, maybe in the twenty-five years I've been at this, the idea that you would with intentionality try to attract different age levels of people and family, you know, mixtures, just the larger two-bedroom plus den, I think there's even one plus 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 whatever, a large unit and then down to the studios and just the mix of people I can envision, I hope it works out like this, from, you know, the twenty-year-olds, you know, whatever, out of high school with their full-time job, college, whatever, all the way up to families, maybe in the, in the, I don't want to say like on a treadmill, but they're getting prepared possibly for the Presbyterian Home next phase of their life. I mean, but to have that mixture, I think, of families is really, really neat. And I don't know that any projects intentionally that I've remembered come to us like that. So, yeah, so all the accolades that have been given up here, it's, I'm really, really pleased, pleased to have Timberline doing two big projects here right in our downtown area. So with that, if there's no other comments, we'll take a vote, it's been, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, welcome. Look very much forward to having you with us once again, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the second public hearing of the evening of four.
Yes, yes, Mayor, and this is tied to Paraval, so it's connected.
Yes, yes, Mayor, and this is tied to Paraval, so it's, it's connected. This is a public hearing requirement action to establish the tax increment financing district for Paraval. So you did hear through the discussion that with all the affordable units, the 50-plus units, this meets a test for a new housing tax increment financing district, and this project does require TIF financing for it to occur. So the action is, tonight, is to hold a public hearing. You're modifying the redevelopment plan of the city. So we're changing the boundaries of a redevelopment project area. We're going to be creating a new TIF district for Paraval, and then we're going to have a TIF plan for Paraval. So following the public hearing and your action, staff will actually be putting together those plans and agreements that would come forward at a later council meeting or HRA meeting date.
Great. Just a brief educational comment here that for anyone in the audience listening or at home, TIF districts capture future tax dollars, and they capture them from the increasing tax base because of a new project that gets completed. So if that project was never completed, the tax base would never go up. We'd never have future growth in our tax base or tax flow of money. So there's a but-for clause, but for a tax increment financing district, if indeed this project would not work except for this, that's, that's the rule that basically a TIF district can, can be legitimately passed. So I just, a little explanation there. But this is a public hearing. Before we do that, council, any questions, or should we just go ahead and have the public hearing? This is a public hearing on just this tax increment financing district component to this project. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on this issue? Council?
Motion.
Move to close the public hearing and direct staff to include a redevelopment plan modification for the redevelopment project area number five, establish the TIF District 24, and adopt a TIF plan in agreement for Paraval at Castle Ridge on a future HRA city council meeting agenda.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes. All right. Our third public hearing of the evening, Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, our historic, national historic property, the Glen Lake Children's Camp located at 6350 Indian Chief Road, is operated by True Friends. And they are requesting a certificate of appropriateness, which is required when a plan is made for an addition or an alteration to historic property, COA. The Heritage Preservation Commission reviewed and approved plans for what would be some exterior renovations to the Camp Lions Den Building at the Glen Lake Children's Camp. And this COA, following approval, will allow for some replacing of siding windows, doors, and an ADA ramp at the Lions Den Cabin. The project proponent from Two Friends, I believe, is here to also provide a brief overview and answer any questions that you may have or anyone may have associated with the public hearing.
Is there a formal presentation or no?
Yes, I believe Connor McGrath from Two Friends, as I said, is here to provide a brief overview.
Sorry.
It's all right.
I missed that part. I thought it was just to get our questions. I apologize.
It's all right.
Thank you.
It's okay.
I won't make you repeat it again.
Yeah.
He was, he was nodding and looking at me like I'm on my way up. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor.
Give your name and address. That would be great.
Thank you, councilmembers and staff. My name is Connor McGrath. I'm here tonight representing the True Friends Camp Edenwood location, located on Indian Chief Road here in Eden Prairie. For those who don't know much about True Friends and the Camp Edenwood location, we, we're a group of five locations across the state of Minnesota, providing youth and adults, primarily adults with developmental and physical disabilities. At the Camp Edenwood location, we serve approximately 15,000 of the 25,000 individuals that we serve across our organization. From team building to therapeutic horseback riding camps, summer camps, winter camps, weekend respite, primarily for young adults and aging adults, for out-of-home respite care, to provide respite both for the individual and their caregiver. And then we do a lot with our travel program also at the Edenwood location, where we will take off there from that location to Germany, India, all around the world with adults with developmental disabilities. So the properties is very important to us, and having that space located in the Twin Cities is equally very important to us. We also have other properties in Maple Lake and Annandale, Minnesota, Lake George, and in Plymouth, Minnesota also. You can see our vision, mission, and values on this, on your screens. In essence, I have summed it up. We, we're a place that has a mission to provide life-changing experiences to youth and adults with special needs and disabilities. That extends much further than just the individual that we're serving, also into their families and their communities that they're a part of, including the Eden Prairie community. We're located over off of Indian Chief Road, like I mentioned. The clients that we serve in our summer camp programs range from about ages five, the oldest that we've served there is around 92. And we, what people ask us often, what do the kids or adults do when they go to camp? And it's, it's pretty simple. Whatever you do when you go to your cabin or whatever you do when you're with your friends, we make that very accessible to the individuals that are in our spaces. So that goes beyond just programming areas, but also to include the facilities that we have, and also sticking with our values of safety and sustainability and our physical footprint at Camp Edenwood also. We've been at this location since 1995. We just renewed a 20-year lease in 2014 with the city of Eden Prairie and are continuing to provide updates to the physical infrastructure at Camp Edenwood, including the new construction of many buildings since we've taken over in 85, and the ongoing maintenance of buildings following a facility condition assessment in 2017. So the building, the Lions Den building is within the National Historic District, and it is a non-contributing building to the, to the history of the property, that and the Birch Wood Cabin. What we're looking to do to the building is replace the current T-111 siding, which does not match the historic buildings, and replace that with a cedar lap siding made by the Smart LP Diamond Coat Company with a 30-year pre-finished guarantee. Windows to match the, I should mention, all of the, all of the fixtures and features of the materials that will be used will match the Burglum Center that was erected in 2016, 2017. You'll see some images that as we continue to go through. But the windows will be an Arnsen's product, or an Anderson's product. The doors built by Bearbilt. The soffit and fascia will also be pre-finished aluminum product, and the handrails will be simple cedar deckboard pre-finished. On your screens, you'll see two visuals, the current visual of the Lions Den on the left-hand side, and the visual of the recently built Burglum Center that is within the National Historic District also at Camp Edenwood. So some of the more detailed information on the materials that we wish to use in the project for sustainability. Again, being a nonprofit, one of the things we, we have to be very mindful of is the products that we use. We really want to make sure they last throughout the longevity of our programs and ensure that our maintenance costs are kept down so that we can keep our services affordable to individuals in the community. So we're looking at a Smart LP lap cedar siding. We've been using this product for about six years with great success across northern and central Minnesota. There's a really high load impact with it, which is nice because it's right by the newly-built ADA-accessible park that's there, playground. So it's nice that it has a high impact with the ridge stack design. The Anderson 400 series, again, it's a product we've been using for quite some time, pre-finished with four-inch LP boards on the outside of the building for easy ongoing maintenance if we were in the need to replace one of those windows. The doors will be built by Bearbilt, matching the Burglum Center. You can see a visual here of what the doors in the Burglum Center look like with quarter light. We would match either the quarter light or the full light, depending on the application. That will have an ADA threshold, 25-year warranty, and again, with the concept of having it be a low-maintenance product. Fascia soffit, same concept, pre-finished before, before installing off-site. It's a product we've been using, and it's been on our standards guide for about eight years at this point. And it really, it connects really nicely into the overall roofing system that we'd be using in the remodel. And then the current, the current ramp that is there is plywood, so it's not great for drainage. We would replace that with deck boards, deck railings for easier snow removal on the lower part of the deck to reduce ice buildup and any hazards for clients. We'd also use a product that assists with the deference of mold buildup. We do not get a lot of sun on that side of the building, so currently it, it does pose a hazard. In a nutshell, is the, the building improvements that we are seeking to complete at the Camp Edenwood property. Thank you.
Council, before we open it up, are there any questions or comments? I just want to say that I do appreciate the thoroughness and the details of the report because this council in our city has, for years, valued the historical integrity of that site itself. And it's one of our only two National Historic Register designated places in the city, Cummins, Gril, and then this Camp Edenwood site. So thank you for the attention that you, you all are giving to this. We'll open it up, and if we need you back, we'll call you back up. But thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience wishing to address the council on just this findings of fact and approve the certificate of appropriateness part for this national historic site? Council?
Seeing none, I would move to close the public hearing and adopt the findings of fact and approve certificate of appropriateness 2019-01-001 for the renovations to the Lions Den Building.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, great. Our last public hearing of the evening of vacation. I think this is fairly routine.
Yes, Mayor, and councilmembers, there are a couple twists in this one, but this is a...
Wrong again.
No, you're, you're correct in that we've done several of these, and, and we're on a roll. But, yeah, we've got a request to vacate right-of-way easements near Castle Moore Drive, part of the Presbyterian Homes projects here, Phase One and Two. And there was an objection from CenturyLink regarding the public utilities they have in the easement. So upon approval of this, we're asking that you condition the receipt of the vacation on that, that issue being worked out, or what we would term as there being no objection to the vacation. So that has happened on occasion, too, to where we have a utility that may still have some concerns that may have to be worked out. So that's one of the twists. But you're right, it is a, you know, an item related to vacating right-of-way easements, which you do quite a bit with development projects.
Let me ask about that. I mean, would, do utilities, we have a lot of utilities in our public right-of-way spaces, but do they have, in essence, veto power? Is it just the fact that they're there? I mean, obviously, if they're not there, there's, they don't have any grandfathering and rights, but in this case, just because they're there?
Well, Mr. City Attorney, are you going to weigh in on this? Either one. Oh, you both can.
Yes, oftentimes, because those utilities, they've borne a cost to put those in the right-of-way, they do have the authority to, I guess, object to vacation of right-of-way. Oftentimes, it's simply a new easement being provided in lieu of the right-of-way that satisfies this issue. So this is probably one out of every 10 vacation of right-of-way that we have. There is an issue like this, but it's always resolved. So I don't have any doubt that that will be the case here.
Thank you. This is a public hearing.
Oh, I just got a quick question. Objection, Mr. Ellis, you said objection. Can they actually veto, though?
Yes, the right-of-way cannot be vacated unless they've satisfied, that objection has been satisfied. So.
Thank you.
That's correct.
Clarification, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this vacation issue this evening? Council?
So.
We do, we do have one.
Here is the mayor, councilmembers. John Fletcher with Presbyterian Homes. Even though I didn't speak before, I do want to put on the record that we do support Timberland and their project. We'd very much like that to proceed. But yes, just to clarify as well, there, there's a number of easements on the site that are getting vacated all at the same time. Like was mentioned, essentially, we've got a situation where we need to vacate all the easements, then put new ones back in place. And so that's all that is at this point.
I just want to make sure their rights are protected, and there's a new easement that they'll be able to traverse or something.
Correct. Everybody's being taken care of. We just have to vacate before we can put them back on.
Got it. Thank you for the clarification. Anybody else? Council?
So I move to close the public hearing and adopt a resolution vacating right-of-way easement.
And with the condition that Mr.?
It's in the resolution.
Great, perfect. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right. Payment of claims, any, any items to question or have staff talk about? If not, could I have a roll call?
We have to have, yeah, first, don't we do a vote first and then do roll call?
Sure. Could I have a vote, please? Maybe a motion and a second, then we'll do roll call.
I move approval of payment claim as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call. Thank you.
Councilmember Aho.
Aye.
Councilmember Freiberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Narayan.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Keys.
Aye. All right. Reports of councilmembers, let me just speak quickly to a couple. So on Monday, at the Regional Council of Mayors in Minneapolis, they had the Minnesota State Director for the United States Census there. And very intriguing, interesting presentation. But what I want to bring back to all of us, and then have Mr. Getcho just talk about, that we are doing these recommendations. But this, I just want to level set this. This is not in any way, the census itself, in this sense, is no, in no way a political issue. It's about getting every single person, every human being counted across the United States of America in every jurisdiction, because every human being that's residing in a particular area ends up accounting for almost $3,000 of various government money. And every three person that's not counted is a loss to that. The other thing they said is that typically 17% of people never get counted, don't respond that first time in the census. And if we picked up just 3% of those, we save ourselves a congressional seat in the state of Minnesota. That's not Republican or Democrat. That's, we've got to save ourselves that congressional seat. And I guess in 2010, that's how close we were to have saved it, just barely. So we're, we mean counting everyone that's in this country for a year or two on some kind of a visa, on a green card, undocumented. Every human being that's residing in a particular area counts towards the benefit that a community would receive if they get counted. So what, what this census director said is that every community just has to, and we already have, form a complete count committee. And so Mr. Getcho, I just thought if you would just briefly tell us what our city's complete count committee, what constitutes it, and what their actions will be.
Yes, Mayor and council. So back in 2017, the mayor at that time met with city staff, our planning staff, and census director, and members of the Met Council, and we formed, as you said, a complete count committee. And we also, in early 2019, the city council passed a resolution where you acknowledged the importance of this upcoming 2020 census. So the Met Council and the federal and state government have a lot of different tools and communication mechanisms that can assist individual cities in getting the word out on getting a complete count. So we're using not only our city staff, but also our Human Rights and Diversity Commission to work with our city staff on behalf of the city to do quite a bit of education through our city website and through some different events that have happened and will happen in the community to get as many people counted as possible. So that includes people that also may speak different languages. So there's 59 different languages available with the census, and there's several different languages spoken at Eden Prairie. So we're all, we're also working with groups and our resources available to get the word out, as many different languages as possible, that everyone needs to be counted in our community. So there, there will be more to come. 2020's a big year, but some of the discussion on complete count was beginning in 2017, 2018. 2017, 2018, continues this year into next year. So at some point, we could have an update from staff and our Human Rights and Diversity Commission, uh, about this, probably is in their work plan, and will continue to be in their work plan. So, uh, Mayor, we have, um, you know, we've been working at it.
Excellent.
Yeah.
So, uh, this is fitting to be talking about the census today because today, September 17th, is what day nationally?
You know, stopping us?
Constitution Day, good job. Thank you, Councilmember Freiberg. U.S. Constitution Day, September 17th, 1787, and the same day that the census was, um, beginning to be discussed, and I believe, I, now, Mr. Freiberg helped me, but is it in the Constitution? But at any rate, it's talked about, uh, uh, often in the same, uh, conversation, the Constitution, and this idea of counting our people, because our, our governmental systems depend on the count. Um, and, except for a brief time when citizenship was for a while in a few of the census, generally it's never been in, and it wasn't meant to be at the time, because there were a lot of people in our country that were not full citizens that needed to be counted, uh, because of funding and representation. So, um, we, uh, need to do our part to make sure that Eden Prairie gets its full, complete count. So thank you so much. I appreciate all that the staff is doing with that. The second, um, issue I wanted to bring up is, um, for those people that, uh, which I believe is about, uh, probably 30,000 Eden Prairie people that live within, um, a couple miles of the Flying Cloud Airport, many, many people that I've, um, been talking to recently have had, have come up and talked to me and had a perception or sense that air traffic is increasing and that tra, uh, air noise is increasing. And what I would like to do is to find out, um, more about that from a statistical standpoint of, is it? Uh, do we have a different kind of a plane up there? Is it all within our 2002 agreement? Uh, because if it simply is that, um, we, so, we penned an agreement back in 2002 with the MAC, and immediately 9/11 occurred, and then the Great Recession occurred, and the increases in jet traffic never occurred in 2008, 9, 10, the way people had predicted and expected. But in the last five to six years, I believe that we have been growing and growing and growing, and the, and that the growth today is probably along the lines of what was, I want to find out more, probably expected back in 2001, 2002. So my, um, thought would be to invite our new Eden Prairie resident chair, Rick King, and come, and also introduce, um, our new Eden Prairie representative of MAC, Raj, help me? A- Agra Wal. Agra Wal. Um, first time in my memory, we have two Eden Prairie residents that represent us on the MAC. I'm just really excited about that. So we can bring, if he's available, along to see and be introduced to us. But, um, I chatted with, uh, Rick King today about 10 times back and forth by email, and, and basically, he would be coming with the stats and giving us a statistics update. Just, you know, hey, this is the way it is. Yeah, I mean, maybe, maybe at the end of it, it's like, you're really not, shouldn't be experiencing any greater noise, or you are, and here's why, and it's all within our agreement, that kind of a thing. I just wanted, I want to know the facts, and I'd like our people to know the facts. Finally, third, real quickly, um, some of you know that I had attended, uh, back in March, um, paid for by the Kaufman Foundation down in Kansas City, um, a convention or conference on entrepreneurial ship, and I had to go, um, to that, attend that conference, and ahead of time, I had to select a project, basically, for our city, and I selected that we, I would learn more about applying for an EDA, Economic Development Agency Federal Grant, for our city to do something more with enhancing our entrepreneurial ship startup, um, economic environment. Um, at the time, my head was going towards maybe, again, an economic space that we had talked about through the last decade, you know, my thought went to incubator space, accelerator, co-location. Uh, that, those are all good ideas, and some cities are doing that, but, but there's almost like the second iteration of that. There's something, uh, more. It's like really, truly having some kind of an economic development center space. Uh, we have the possibility of certain areas in the next couple of years, but what we're missing, and, and let me backtrack, we pulled several key leaders together to be partners in this. We have, um, we had a breakfast the other morning, Mr. Getcho and I did, and Dave Lindahl with, um, our, um, School District Superintendent with the 1 Million Cups, um, Patrick Donahue, uh, help me.
Chamber President.
Chamber, uh, Pat Mulquenee, we really need the Eden Prairie Chamber, that they're going to be a key partner. The EDA, uh, is very, uh, favorable towards partnerships. I've even chatted with a couple mayors that border our town, and they might be interested. But I'm going to, um, and the NLC is flying in 10 or 12 mayors, um, on October 1st to meet with the EDA and go that next step in the application process, and that application could be used for an FTE. I mean, really could be a person. It could be somebody that would come back and bring all these partnerships together. Maybe, I'm making this up, I have no idea, maybe it's a year's salary for a person, or a half-time for two years. I, I don't, we don't know yet. But it's just that next step, I'm super excited about it. So October 1st happens to be a council meeting, and Councilmember Aho, uh, acting as acting mayor, will lead that. So I just want to let you know that that's coming up as well, and if anyone has questions, um, well, you all could ask now, but any resident as well could, um, shoot me an email, so. Anything else, Mr. Earl?
I was just going to say, thank you for attending that, and thank you for going. I think it's, uh, it's a good thing for our city, and I think we've, you know, talked about a lot of those things, like, those concepts, like you said, for a number of years, and I think it's, uh, it's good for our residents and our businesses, and, and I, and I think, did you also include the Hennepin Technical College as well? I think you did, didn't you?
Well, I didn't tonight, but eventually, that group swells and grows, and we absolutely pull in the colleges around here, and, and businesses and retired CEOs. I mean, there's just, and, and, and representatives of, um, people of all ages that are entrepreneurs, ones that have tried it for 30 years, ones that are brand-new. Let me just add real, real quickly, thank you, Councilmember Aho. Um, one of the emphases will be, um, looking at our diverse populations and our youth and women, because those are groups that often are, uh, neglected when it comes to the funding stream. Um, and that's something the Kaufman Foundation's really excited about, all three of those groups. So if we were to concentrate in our economic development center, especially, I love the idea of youth and our diverse communities, just because I think we have such a wealth of, um, opportunity in our city with, um, those groups, so.
Yeah, just one more to add. I would also recommend we add Minnesota High Tech Association. They are the center of Minnesota, bring all the technology. Um, I think they have 600-something, uh, members in there, and they do a lot of, uh, work in, so.
Great.
Tax credits and work with the state legislators to bring money to the entrepreneurs. So it would be great to have somebody from that group.
Thank you. As this evolves and we begin to see what it might be, um, that's the kind of, absolutely kind of expansion, um, and ideas that we'll want to pull in. Anybody else? All right, thank you. Um, what are we down to here?
That was it.
We're done.
That's it. Any, um, counsel, any other items to come before us tonight? Mr. Getcho?
No.
Okay, could I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn the city council meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, meeting adjourned.